And then, uh, you'd just figure out what the wifi was?
Yeah.
Or is it?
I have all those.
Okay, yeah. All those. Okay, I'll check that. I'll, I'll let you know.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
Got it.
Jesus.
I know.
No wheels.
Did he go up?
Let's see, I don't know. Oh, I guess it did. I don't know. Yes, let's take him in. We don't even, do we have a quorum yet?
Um, I just saw Sam.
Okay.
Yeah, Sam's walking up and, um...
Yeah, all we need is five, right?
Yeah, two, five.
You got everybody's pin?
Yeah, they were, they're there.
Go right there.
So I think you'll have to go there because you already have your pin and we get pretty busy.
Yeah, oh, I, I got, I got two of them. I got one from the other man too, but I, I, I didn't, but he gave me one because he was getting everybody else one here. But that's what you, the last people, they get a pin. I asked, I asked for it. How you doing? I asked for it, it said. Huh? Yeah.
Guess we're ready. What's it, you have a quorum now?
Yeah, what's anybody else want?
Is there, no one else?
Uh, no.
No.
There was a...
We have...
I just said one minute.
One minute?
Yes.
Why are we up here? I was wanting, walking in and I wanted to know if any guys want to change this maybe to six thirty or seven? Because Lucy, we had it at seven, but Lucy Payne came and she wanted to have it at six. Well, a lot of people get off work, my wife get off work, she's fixing dinner and about at four thirty, five. And then I got to be here at six and I got to gobble everything down, so...
I know, I know Carlos wants it later.
Yeah.
Even six thirty?
Six thirty, I, yeah, I mean... It doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, it, it's just, it's Carlos...
I'm used to seven o'clock meetings, but, you know, then you also get into, then, then...
Late, late on.
Then you're getting late.
Six thirty is good, what do you guys think about that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what we'd have to do in terms of if it's a, if it's just talking to Donovan or having a motion.
Uh, we can, we can do it ourselves.
We can just make a motion to change it.
Motion to change that, that's what we did the last time.
Yeah, okay.
Put her like Donovan off.
Matter of fact.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and Donovan, you see, the thing is Donovan's got an issue too, because I don't know if he's staying. So now he's got to stay.
Right, he's, he's, he's a, he's a young guy and stuff and...
He can handle it.
He can handle it. He ain't ma, he ain't married yet, I don't think.
He's got to pay his dues.
We was wondering, could we, uh, change our hours to six thirty so everybody could kind of make it?
That's, that's what we want to do.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what...
It will be up to you all.
Okay. Okay.
If you want to, if you want to make a motion in, uh, what do we got? We got, uh...
Could I make a motion now on that?
No.
No.
Miscellaneous, we could do it in miscellaneous.
Okay, miscellaneous.
Yeah.
Bring it up in the end and then I'll go through the process.
In the end?
Yeah.
He made it.
Okay.
We're changing to six thirty. Make a motion to do that.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I know you're going to feel like that.
We figured that would be.
We're thinking about you.
You're thinking.
All right. Call the October seventeenth, uh, ZBA meeting to order. Roll call, please.
All right, roll, roll call. Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Bueno. Commissioner Kirkendorf.
Here.
Commissioner Bevakuwa.
Here.
Bevakuwa, I'm gonna get it right. Uh, Commissioner McCullen.
Mr. B.
All right, we recorded as absent. Uh, Commissioner May requested to be excused. Commissioner Burke.
Yeah, here.
And Commissioner Ford.
Present.
Chair, you have a quorum.
All right. Let's move on to the next item. We've got, uh, any communications?
Uh, Chair, we have no communications.
All right, and then, uh, adoption of the minutes would be next. Is there any questions or changes?
I move to adopt the minutes, the minutes from August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Burke. Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Uh, roll call. Uh, Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Bueno. Commissioner Kirkendorf.
Yes.
Commissioner Bevakuwa.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullen is absent. Uh, Commissioner May is excused. Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ford.
Abstain.
Abstain, one, two, three, one, two, three, four. Uh, Chair, the minutes have been approved.
All right, is there any old business?
Uh, Chair, there is no old business.
All right, on to new business.
All right, moving on. And could just, Commissioners, just, uh, just to be aware, just make sure you hit your mic button when you speak. So that the media folks can pick it up. All right, the first item we have today is, uh, ZBA two-two dash eleven. Uh, this is on behalf of the applicant, Nature's Remedy Pontiac LLC, Walter Mandu. Uh, the address is nine three nine Orchard Lake Road and for parcel six four one four three one three eight zero, uh, dash zero zero one. This is a request for a linear dimensional variance from the twenty-foot rear yard setback or the request for a fifteen-foot rear yard setback dimensional variance. Um, so on your screen for context, the property is located, uh, this would be east of Orchard Lake Road, uh, between Berkeley Avenue and Dover Road. Uh, the site actually stretches that entire frontage there. Um, and the variance would be not for this existing building, but for actually the building that will be constructed. Uh, provided in your plan, just for, also for reference, is a site plan or contextual site plan. Again, you can see, uh, to the top of the screen is Orchard Lake. Um, to the left of the screen would be Dover and, and to the right you would have, um, uh, that would be Berkeley. Uh, Berkeley to the north. Um, to the south, there is an alley that is currently a public alley. And then there's also another parcel on the other side of the alley that the applicants are proposing to use for parking. Uh, they are actively working through, or the planning commission did recommend for approval of variance for, I'm sorry, a zoning map amendment for the parking lot. And the planning commission did approve a preliminary site plan, uh, for the use, proposed use, access, circulation, uh, screening and layout, um, as was proposed. Uh, again, just another, uh, contextual site plan, so you can get a different feel for the site. Orchard Lake would be to the top, Dover here to the, that would be the south or the west, and then the east would be Berkeley. Again, you have the public alley. Uh, this here is the property line, this kind of bold thick line here, so, you know, keep that in mind. And then the proposed parking, uh, just on the other side of the alley. Um, in regards to the variance request itself, uh, this is for a fifteen-foot rear yard setback variance or a variance to permit a rear yard setback of five feet. Um, so again, your site plan, the red, uh, hashed or dotted line shows the current setbacks. Um, so all new construction should be, uh, inside of this box. They are proposing or requesting a, a variance to allow them to build outside of that build-to-zone box. Um, and then this, uh, red rectangle indicates the five-foot setback. So instead of this entire distance being a setback, it would actually only be for five feet to allow that building to be located there. Um, they did provide some images, so we did give you some images of what their proposed facility would look like. Um, this is an existing facility in a different community, uh, from the same group. And then this is actually what the proposed, uh, facility here in Pontiac would look like. And that variance would take place behind this building, so it's, it would allow it to be pushed back, uh, a little further to the rear. Uh, so for, uh, practical difficulty in determining for a dimensional variance is an, uh, an ability given to the zoning board of appeals and must be approved by a vote of the majority. There are several criteria, uh, that outline if a project does have a practical difficulty and is appropriate for a, um, a variance. Um, we provided a more detailed outline in your package, but I can briefly go over those items. Um, one, the depth of the existing site and subject property, um, requires the necessary space for access and circulation. Restricting the applicant to the permitted dimensional standards does place an unnecessary burden, uh, to the property owner. Uh, granting the dimensional variance would provide a substantial justice to the applicant in respect to their property. The variance request is a result of the unique size of the property. The variance request is not the result of a self-created problem. The applicant's request for a dimensional variance does uphold the spirit of the ordinance based on the review regarding public safety and welfare. The variance request will not have adverse impacts on the items listed in section six point four zero one B of the zoning ordinance. And these are design and site planning criteria. And seven, the design request does not, does comply with the seven special exemption review standards set forth in six point three zero one of the zoning ordinance. Um, and then we have just a few additional staff findings. As mentioned at the September seventh planning commission meeting, a public hearing was, uh, held to approve a special exemption permit for a retail provisioning center. In addition to a preliminary site plan, uh, was approved at that time. Um, briefly for context, there were five provisioning centers, uh, to be permitted outside of the medical marijuana overlay districts. Uh, this site is one of the five, the other four have not been determined at this time. Um, the proposed variance will not impact access or use of the public alley, which is immediately adjacent. Um, and again, the request would be to permit a five-foot rear yard setback. And that concludes the presentation for ZBA twenty-two dash eleven.
Is the applicant here and would they like to speak?
Good evening, board members. Uh, my name is Kevin Heffernan, uh, Stonefield Engineering. We are the civil and consultant for the project. Joined here by product sponsor, Mr. Wally Mandu. So, thanks Donovan for the, uh, descriptive analysis of our site. Um, really, yeah, we're just excited to bring it in front of you, be here again for another meeting, uh, keep this project moving. Um, some context on the practical difficulty, uh, the reason why we are requesting this variance. You'll see that there is a five and a half, uh, north to south grade change from the road to the alley. Kind of two, uh, tie-in points that are existing on site and are impossible to alter. And then, um, that even, it even, uh, increases as you go east to west. Corner to corner of the site, as you see, it's kind of a wide site, not a very deep site, is about six and a half feet. So, um, the steep grade change was the biggest challenge on site. And we've had a couple of design features such as extending our curbs, uh, retaining wall. Um, we even have portions of our building where the finished floor is bolt low, the outside grade to try and make up this, um, this difficulty. And on top of that, uh, why we chose to move the building towards the alley rather than the Orchard Lake frontage is we have about a twenty-foot portion, uh, where we place our driveway to help make up grade rather than use even further more of our site to make up that grade. What you see on site, um, is about maybe a four and a half percent slope north to south. Uh, you normally want to design these sites under five percent, four and a half being the absolute max, uh, to avoid if you park your car, it's four and a half, five percent slope. Get out, that door's going to swing wide open, so you want to keep it more flat. Um, and this design kind of accomplishes that, uh, by bringing it further to the south and using some of the public right away, our driveway, um, to make up the grade. We're more at like three percent where, you know, it is a lot more safe for any pedestrians or any users that come to our site. Um, furthermore, uh, we do have a couple of justifications for the seven, uh, conditions. If so, you guys would like, uh, have a little Q and A on it. Uh, most of them do pertain to that grade change and as it was the greatest challenge of this project so far. So, with that, uh, happy to answer any questions, uh, should there be any. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the Commissioners?
I have one. Uh, is this across from, uh, the Home Depot?
Correct.
Okay, and that vacant lot?
Yes.
Yeah, that's been vacant a long time. Okay.
All right, uh...
Donovan, regarding the parking, do you say that's, uh, on the other side of the alleyway?
Yes.
Is that still pending or...
Uh, the parking on the other side of the alleyway, the planning commission did recommend approval of the zoning map amendment to allow the parking. Uh, it will be going to city council next week to finalize that vote. Um, and if that is passed, then they would be permitted to use that area for parking.
And if it doesn't pass, is there then issues with parking on the site then?
There is not additional issues. Uh, they are actually above and kind of beyond the requirements for parking. Um, I believe their, uh, objective was to use this for staff parking. Um, if the rezoning is not approved, then it would, uh, continue with R-one zoning designation and it wouldn't be able to be used for parking.
Is the site plan going to include landscaping from the parking that's in the alleyway, the houses behind it?
Yes, uh, the landscaping plan wasn't included in this presentation, but there is a in-depth, uh, landscaping plan and buffering requirement between areas used for parking and residential. So that would be a requirement, yes.
Thank you. Just a question to the applicant, um, not that it has to do anything with this, uh, with the setback requirement, but the operation itself, is there going to be any, any odors coming from the building, any, any cooking, any, um, uh, things that might, from the building itself?
I'm sure you can speak a little bit more to it, but I don't believe so. I think with these type of uses, you'll see, um, additional requirements for the HVAC systems and keeping everything internal. Even including, uh, refuse disposal and things of that sort too.
So strictly retail sales?
Yeah, yes, I apologize. My name is Mr. Mandu Walter, first name. Uh, it's strictly retail, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just worried of any...
Correct.
Closer to the, closer to the little houses behind you, if there's any odors, um...
No, 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 no. We're, we have to meet state and city requirement in order to build a facility. We have existing facilities right now. We're in compliance with the state of Michigan. Uh, these facilities do not, uh, have any, uh, odor. If it's a grow operation or a processing, it's totally different, then yes, you would require that.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
So, thank you.
And, uh, I guess we'll open a public hearing. If there's anybody who would like to speak. Seeing no one, we can close the public hearing.
You have one, you have one to your left.
Pardon?
No, I was just gonna say, I make a motion to approve the dimensional variance, ZBA twenty-two dash twenty-one petition for nine thirty-nine Orchard Lake Road, Nature's Remedy Pontiac LLC, Walter Mandu, parcel six four dash one four dash three one dash three eight zero dash zero one one, granting a dimensional variance of fifteen linear feet to permit the new construction, your rear yard setback of five linear feet.
Support. We have a motion from Burke and, uh, support from Kirkendorf.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bueno.
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkendorf.
Yes.
Commissioner Bevakuwa.
Yes.
Commissioner Burke.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Chair, the motion passes to approves, ZBA two-two dash eleven.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, keep it alley clean too.
It's gonna be a...
Yeah, that's been a problem.
It's gonna be a beautiful site.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six point two.
Yes.
The applicant is La Abeja Mexican Bakery. Hope I didn't pronounce that.
Now you have an hard time.
It's actually Abeja.
Abeja, yeah, that would make sense. Uh, at eight hundred North Perry Street.
Yes.
And it's a, uh, C-one local business district and the request is for a dimensional variance. Mr. Lanner, do we have a presentation?
Yes, I'm trying to click or stop working. I apologize. Sorry. I was gonna have to call media services, but we got it together. All right, the next item.
Okay. All right, give me one second. Let me figure out why this isn't working.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so the next item is ZBA twenty-two dash twelve of La Abeja Mexican Bakery, uh, located at eight hundred North Perry Street. This is a request for a ten-foot, uh, linear dimensional variance from the twenty-foot required rear yard setback. Um, on your screen you have a contextual site plan. The site is located, uh, south of, uh, Montcom and MLK Boulevard, uh, along North Perry, uh, nestled between Jocelyn Avenue and Martin Luther King. That, that would be this property here. Uh, it does rear, uh, but, uh, this parcel, um, and you'll, you'll see that as we move through the presentation. So the applicant is, has submitted a site plan. This is their current site as it exists. Um, so it is a, uh, the gray box indicates the existing building and the parking and their dumpster enclosure to the rear. Um, and then that building I mentioned, the white roof, uh, this is the existing building located to the, I mean, the south of the site. Um, they are requesting a rear yard variance, um, to construct in addition to the back of their property. Uh, the requirement is twenty feet in the rear. They are proposing or requesting to allow for a ten-foot rear yard setback and a ten-foot variance from that, uh, criteria. Um, the red line or the red dotted line indicates the current setback. Um, and that box indicates, uh, the area they plan on adding or that ground area they plan on adding to the building. Um, here to the south is another addition that has been approved. Uh, this is for a front addition or additional space to the front of the building. A variance was not needed for that addition, um, so they were permitted to move forward with that one. Um, they have provided a floor plan, um, so you can see the area, uh, in the back where the addition will be. Um, and you can kind of see where the addition would be also in the front. Um, but this is that, that rear yard addition where they'll be adding to the back of that building. And I do want to clarify, um, the existing building, uh, the adjacent property, uh, the building is built to its property line. Um, and actually does encroach a little bit onto this property. Uh, we have discussed this with the building department to determine if there were any issues with, uh, the encroachment of the adjacent property and the setback, uh, reduction of this property, and there are no, uh, conflicts in terms of spacing between buildings. Uh, they seem to be pretty okay with the request as a, as a whole. Um, so for reference, uh, this is the property. Um, this is, uh, before the addition on the front, uh, started, so this face you can expect to be brought closer. And then, uh, here you can see that existing building that with the encroachment issues. And then they would be adding actually onto the back of this building. Uh, so there would be a ten-foot space between, uh, the rear of the addition and the face of the existing, uh, building. Um, so again, we're looking at practical difficulty and those criteria items to determine if a property is suitable for variance, um, and has established a practical difficulty. Um, the subject building is built to its existing setbacks, um, and that would be to the, um, the east. Uh, that property line is built to its existing setbacks. Um, and currently does not permit expansion, uh, by right to the north or the east. Um, restricting the applicant to the permitted dimensional standards does place an unnecessary burden on the, uh, property owner. Uh, granting the dimensional variance would provide substantial justice to the applicant in respect to their property. The variance request is a result of the, uh, unique size of the property. The variance is not a self-created problem. The applicant's request for a dimensional variance does uphold the spirit of the ordinance based on review regarding public safety and welfare. The variance request will not have adverse impacts on the listed review items found in section six point four zero one B of the zoning ordinance. The variance request does comply with the seven... The variance request does comply with the seven special exemption criteria review standards set forth in section 6.303 of the zoning ordinance. And then some additional review items. As mentioned, the planning division and building department have conditionally approved the construction plans for the addition to the rear pending the approval of a dimensional variance from the zoning board of appeals. The applicant is currently adding in addition to the front of the property, which a variance was not required and has been approved. And lastly, the applicant does request to permit a 10-foot rear yard setback. And that concludes the presentation for ZBA 22-12. Thank you.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Um, we have no questions.
And are there any questions from the commissioners to the applicant or to the planner?
I have a question. Donovan, can you go back?
Yeah. Well, which slide?
To the, to the, right there. Come back. Yeah, that one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, that's their building, the red building, right?
Correct.
And the building behind it, right there?
Yes.
Where are you going to?
Fit it.
Fit it? I mean, do they own, I mean, do they own that building?
The applicants do not own that existing building. There is currently, it may be hard to see from this image specifically, but between the back of the current building and the existing building, there is 30 feet.
30 feet.
There is 30 feet actively back there. They are requesting to build 20 feet onto the back of that, so that remaining 10 feet would be that setback.
Oh, okay. I just, because from that picture, it looked like-
It looks tight.
Yeah, it's like, it's just right behind, yeah.
Yep. So, if they were to only build to the setback, they would actually have to stop here at this red line, and they wouldn't be able to actually add that additional 10 feet. So the gap between the rear property line and the building is 10 feet, and the encroachment is not the face of the building, it's actually the overhang.
Okay.
So it's the overhang is a little under a foot, and then from building face to building face would be 10 feet.
Okay.
Of course.
Yep.
Does that have anything to do with the parking requirements if they put that addition on there?
The, the parking requirements would be, have to be recalculated to allow for additional space. So their parking spaces here may have to be adjusted. For a space of that small, maybe two spaces.
Hmm.
Like, that's if they are currently under.
Oh, okay.
So we'll have to, yeah, so we'll have to recalculate that, and based on what that is, they may have to add one or two spaces if that.
Okay, thank you.
It's kind of an odd site with the buildings, how they were already, it was kind of hard to determine who was what, if this, who was encroaching, if there was originally one big site with buildings going around it type of thing? With the property lines being set, and with that building being there, with their site plan, Mr. Ford addressed the parking. Is a dumpster now that's going to be in view, that be screened or somehow, or?
The dumpster will have to be relocated, and the requirement is that it would continue to be screened. So that is a standing requirement for all sites that their dumpsters be screened by masonry wall by three sides, and at least three sides and a gate.
Okay.
And I would assume that all is taken care of during site plan approval through planning commission, right?
This is correct.
One question I do have. You mentioned that, you know, it meets safety requirements, but I just want to clarify. There's no concern with fire previously being able to navigate behind the building, and now they're not going to be able to? Is there, is there anything of concern having a 10-foot?
Setback right there. The, the building department sends the building plans off to fire, and they have not indicated, at least in response, that they have an issue with it. We can always just verify those items, because they, that is a valid concern, so.
Yeah, it just seems like there's not a lot of opportunity to get around that structure if there's only 10 feet.
Yep.
At the same time, there's probably L-shaped structures in the-
Yep. And the fire department, if they, the requirement for plans is what they call 360 access, and that can happen in the way of the vehicle itself can, can get around. And even with the 30 feet as it exists, I would imagine the fire truck could not get around between that 30 feet. So what they, the next step would be the hose has a length of 150 feet from a fire hydrant, or at least from the truck itself. So as long as the fire truck can get into the site and move the hose 150 feet, if that provides them the 360-degree access, then they're typically okay with that.
All right. Thanks for the education.
No problem.
And, and if you notice those buildings on Perry going up here, the fire truck can pull on either side of any of those buildings because they have parking lots, the building and the parking lot. So they could pull on both sides of that and go to the back if they wanted to, because they got parking lots in between the buildings.
Correct. That, I believe that's the, the coney or the checkers on the other side of that building?
Checkers.
It's the checkers, yep.
They got all kind of parking between, space between the buildings there.
All right. Any other questions?
Other questions?
Is there a motion?
Did you, I'm sorry, Chair, did you open the public hearing?
Public hearing is open. Not seeing anyone, public hearing is closed. And is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the dimensional variance ZBA 22-12.
And I apologize, media is having a little hard time picking you up, Commissioner, so just make sure you speak into the mics.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve the dimension variance ZBA 22-12 petition for 800 North Perry parcel 64-14-21-403-065, Abeja Mexican Bakery, grant the variance, granting the dimensional variance of 10 linear feet to allow construction, building addition to be constructed within the 10-year rear yard setback.
Support.
I'm sorry.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirkendall. All right, roll call. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bueno?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Bevacqua?
Yes.
Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You as well.
Item 6.3 from NOAC and Frause Engineers.
Yes.
Address is 501 North Glenwood. It's zoning district of M2 Heavy Manufacturing District, and the request is for a dimensional variance.
Yes. Thank you, Chair. This is item ZBA 22-13. As mentioned, a request for a dimensional variance from the frontage requirement for parcels located in the M2 district. Parcels are required to have a frontage of 200 feet, and this is a variance to allow parcels in that district or newly created parcels in that district to be less than the 200-foot frontage requirement. At any time, I will entertain questions regarding this item as I explain the presentation, because there are a few moving pieces, so just for clarity, just raise a hand or speak, and I'll kind of clarify that. So there are existing parcels and parcels to be created through this proposal. So when I say parcel D and parcel E, these are referring to the items that, the parcels that are going to be created that require the variance. So when you hear me say parcel one or two, or parcel A and B, I'm referring to the existing parcels that will hold the variance, but they will apply to the newly created parcels. Okay? So parcel D, one of those parcels to be created is currently proposed to be 60 feet wide. The requirement is 200 feet, so parcel D requests a variance of 140, 140 linear feet. Parcel E is proposed to have a frontage of 148 feet, and the requirement is 200 feet. So that is a dimensional variance of 63 linear feet less the 200 requirement. So the current layout of parcels, as it exists, you know, when you look at the parcel map, there are two parcels. All of the blue is one parcel, and all of the white is the second parcel. It has lines, this is the proposed division, but in context, it's two parcels being reconfigured to many. So parcel one stretches from Montcom all the way up to the very top, or just short of Columbia, and then parcel two is actually all of the remaining parcel that actually stretches over to, I believe that's Glenwood, Glenwood over to the, the west, east there. So the area we're actually going to be focusing on is down here at the very bottom where it fronts at Montcom, because that's where the frontage variances will take place. So parcel D is outlined here and in your packet. That frontage, following the split of these parcels, would actually be 60, so they are requesting a variance to allow the frontage to be 60, and then vehicles will then be able to drive into the site and access all the other parcels. And parcel E has one frontage, but the street turns, so it almost has two. The combination of the 57 feet and the 90 feet equal your 147, so they're providing a frontage there of 147 feet, so they need a variance of the 63 feet to allow less than. And I'm actually looking at the math, it's a little different there actually, it's 50, I think it's 53 feet. There is an access plan, so there was a requirement that when these parcels be split, that they provide for approval easements that allow fire and police and other services to get to the additional parcels to be created, such as parcel C here and parcel B, even though parcel B can get access here. This easement creates the access. That is a requirement for approval. There are images on the screen, so you can see this is the tire shop that is located to the west. Parcel E will actually, this land here, a part of this split is actually being sold to the building next door, so the, the variance that we're requesting will kind of go away almost as soon as the split happens. It will be valid, and then it will be recombined to this site, and then that variance will kind of no longer exist. Logistically, the variance is required to create that parcel. And then from the other side of this street, you can see this is that 60-foot drive that goes back towards the wear of the property. Looking at the requirements for variance, again, determining practical difficulty, there are seven items. Those items are as following. Restricting the applicant to the permitted dimensional standards does place an unnecessary burden to the property owner and restricts the ability to create usable parcels for development. Granting the dimensional variance would provide substantial justice to the applicant in respect to their property. The variance request is a result of the unique configuration of the subject parcels and the property. The variance request is not the result of a self-created problem. The applicant's request for a dimensional variance does uphold the spirit of the ordinance based on the review regarding public safety and welfare. The variance request will not have adverse impacts on the listed review items found in section 6.401B of the zoning ordinance. The variance request does comply with the seven special exemption criteria standards set forth in section 6.303 of the zoning ordinance. And then there are some additional findings. The land division as proposed by the applicant creates non-conforming parcels in the M2 district. These are parcels with a frontage less than 200 linear feet. The planning division has conditionally approved the request pending the approval of this variance or a dimensional variance from the zoning board of appeals. The additional entitlements for approval include the access road and easement must be approved by the city attorney and the city engineer, as well as the approval of associated easements and construction standards for those, that type of road. And again, the, the variance request was for, and will alter this slightly, for parcel D, a variance for 140 feet, and for parcel E, it'll actually be a variance of 53 feet. So in your motions, if you vote for approval or deny, you just have to reflect 53 feet instead of 63 feet. And that concludes the presentation.
Would the applicant like to speak?
At this time, it sounds pretty well straight. Other than it is an old rail bed that we've redeveloped, which covers, with general orders and racer trust, it covers the, from Montcom all the way up to Colonia, total of about 18 acres there, total only purchased 70 erasure properties between the post office and the general mortgage plant. And we're redeveloping that this time. We'll see a lot of good things happen.
Good. Any questions? Oh, and what's your name?
My name's John Gold, sorry. I'm the general manager of St. Joe, Michigan Limited, the owners of the property.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a question?
That's where the foundry and back, those general motors property? Yeah, okay.
And you know, Class A road that goes up on general motors?
Yeah.
Is very accessible by all.
Okay. Yeah, I, I was trying to figure out where, was that, yeah, that's been vacant for a long time. Okay, just.
Any other questions? And open the public hearing. Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion?
I'll make-
I make a motion to approve the dimensional variance ZBA 22-13 petition for 501 North Glenwood parcels 64-14-20-276-001 and 60, 64-14-17-427-001, granting a dimensional variance for the proposed parcel D property frontage width of 60 linear feet, and granting a dimensional variance of, for the proposed parcel E property frontage width, width of 147 linear feet to allow the partial land division as proposed by the applicant.
Support. Support.
We have a motion by Anderson and support by Kirkendall. And any discussion on the motion?
All right.
Seeing none, roll call, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bueno?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Bevacqua?
Yes.
I want to acknowledge Commissioner McCullen. Welcome.
Thank you.
We are in the active vote. Did you want to participate or abstain?
Yes, I read the information, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Commissioner Burke?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Chair. The motion passes.
Excellent. Thank you, good luck.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is public comment. Seeing any, we can move on to the next item, which is miscellaneous.
Okay, miscellaneous. I would like for, as the political vote, to change the, our meeting to 6:30 instead of 6:00, to give us more time to get here, Mr. Bueno, just more reasonable time.
So the, through the chair, the proper way to make this change is, the next meeting, I can bring the amended agenda, the schedule for all the following meetings this year, and then I will also kind of get ahead of next year. So I'll bring you the revised schedule to show the meeting dates for the remainder of 2022 and '23 with a 6:30 meeting date- date. In addition, we will also amend the bylaws that kind of require or state that our meeting time is 6 o'clock. So those will also be amended, and we'll make a motion to formally adopt the amended bylaws with the adjusted time as well as the amended schedule, the amended 2022 schedule and the adoption of the 2023 schedule. So we'll do all of those at the next meeting.
Okay.
If you want to for procedure, you can make a motion to encourage staff to do that work for you, to get the items to adjust the schedule.
Do you accept that amended motion?
Yes.
And is there support?
Yes.
Do we need a roll call for that, or is it more of a?
No, just all in support, aye. Opposition, nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion to adjust meeting schedule to 6:30 has been received.
Everybody wear their pins next time, too.
Oh, I just got mine today.
Yeah.
You can thank Commissioner Anderson. He's been pushing for those pins for a little over two to three years, so you finally got them today, so thank you.
Duly noted.
Right, we thank you.
So when you go out somewhere, you can be wearing your pin.
Not gonna do all that now.
Any other miscellaneous?
I have no further items.
Final item is to adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Happy Halloween, everyone.